Would like to welcome everyone to our Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners, December 7th, 2020 organizational meeting. Would like to call the meeting to order. This is our meeting that we have each year where we elect our Chair and Vice Chair of our Board. And also have our new Commissioners during an election year joining us. So we would like to welcome Commissioner Barbara Strang for her first meeting tonight. Barbara was elected in the recent election. In a normal year, we would be having a swearing in ceremony for both of our Commissioners that won in the election, but due to COVID and our virtual meeting setup and certainly restrictions on people gathering, we've had to do that a little bit different this year. So Commissioner Strang was sworn in this past Wednesday night. I was sworn in in Commission Chambers earlier today. And of course, we had to skip the normal reception that we have after the swearing in where we welcome the newly elected Commissioners and also where we give them an opportunity to speak to the public that has gathered. And so since we had to skip that this year, where I wanted to offer Commissioner Strang an opportunity to make some comments on joining the Board. Barbara, you can do that now at the beginning of our organizational meeting, or if you would prefer to wait a little bit until we get into our regular work session, we can give that option as well. So at this time, I'll turn it over to you for your input.
All right. Thank you, Steve. I just wanted to say thank you, and I look forward to working with everybody here, Commissioners and, you know, Mike Downs and everybody on the call. So I really am just looking forward to getting down to work and, you know, taking care of business.
Right. Welcome.
Thank you.
And certainly, I would like to thank all of those folks who reelected me for my third term on the Board. It is my honor and privilege to serve the citizens of Cabarrus County. I'm certainly proud of what this Board has accomplished and continues to accomplish. And it is a pleasure to work with everyone serving on our Board. We have been extremely fortunate during the period that we have all served together to have some major accomplishments. And of that, I am very proud and very appreciative. The next item on our agenda is the election of Chairman and Vice Chairman. And according to our rules of procedure, I will now turn the meeting over to County Manager Mike Downs, and he will conduct our elections.
Okay. Well, it gives me a great honor to do this every time, but you didn't pass the gavel. I was wondering how you were going to pass the gavel over to me.
Exactly. We can do that virtually.
We'll make do without it. So we are going to start off. What we'll do is we will vote for a new Chairman. Once the Chairman is voted for and the selection is made, then I will pass the gavel back to the Chairman to hold the election for the Vice Chairman. So we will start off with nominees from the floor for the Office of Chairman of the Board of Commissioners for the ensuing term.
County Manager Downs, I'd like to nominate Steve Morris again. He's been our Chair for, well, since I've been on the Board now, six years. And I'm sort of from the old school, if things aren't broke, let's don't try to fix them. And Steve has the time. He does an excellent job. He's committed to what he's doing. And with his leadership, we surely have come a long ways. And I for one appreciate everything Steve's done. And Steve, if you'd be so gracious to accept that nomination, it'd make me right happy.
Thank you, sir. I will accept.
Okay. Are there any other?
A second.
Commissioner Honeycutt. All right. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Okay. Is there a motion to close nominations?
Termined.
Okay. Okay. Second. All right. Nominations have been closed. So Commissioner Morris, by acclamation, you are now the Chairman again for another term.
Thanks.
The gavel back to you, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. And thank you to the Board members. As I said in my comments a few minutes ago, it certainly is a pleasure to be Chairman of this Board because of the working relationship that we all have and the level of communication that exists with the Board. I have explained to people quite frequently that holding the position of Chair does not mean that I'm the person with the microphone that's expressing my opinion, but rather, my job is to express the collective opinion of the entire Board, or certainly the majority of the Board. And that is what I have tried to do. And all of you make that easy by communicating and talking through issues. And so, thank you. I appreciate you putting your confidence in me to serve in that capacity for another year. And so, at this time, I would open the floor for nominations for the Office of Vice Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Commissioner Honeycutt to continue as our Vice Chair in the coming term.
Right. Thank you, Commissioner Kiger. Are there other nominations for the Office of Vice Chairman? Hearing no other nominations, I would accept a motion to close the nominations and that Commissioner Honeycutt be elected Vice Chairman by acclamation.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval.
Second. Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Shu, a second by Commissioner Kiger, that nominations be closed and Commissioner Honeycutt be elected Vice Chairman by acclamation. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Commissioner Honeycutt, for agreeing to serve in that capacity for another year. You've done an excellent job, and I certainly appreciate all your contributions. Would you like to have any comments before we proceed?
I would just echo what you said, and that working with this Board has been a pleasure. I think we all try to work together and do the best that we can for the citizens of this county. And I want to thank you, as Commissioner Shu said, for all that you do. I have never seen a Chair who, I believe, puts in, I would say probably an average of 30 hours a week. It might not be 30 hours every week, but an average. I mean, you do this like it's a full-time job, and I think the results that this Board has had shows that from your leadership. And I would just say thank you, and I look forward to serving as the Vice Chair this year again.
Thank you. I appreciate those comments. The next item on our agenda is the approval of Public Officials Bond for the Register of Deeds. Wayne Nixon was reelected as Register of Deeds on November 3rd, 2020. Approval of the $50,000 Public Official Bond for the Register of Deeds is requested pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 161-4. So at this time, I would ask if there are certainly entertain a motion to approve the Public Official Bond for Wayne Nixon, Register of Deeds, in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 161-4.
They're moved.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Honeycutt, a second by Commissioner Shu. Is there any discussion? But I think it's pretty self-explanatory, but this is something that is required by law for our Register of Deeds. And so, we're happy to have Mr. Nixon back on board for another term to do this for us. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. And that motion passes unanimously. And there being no other business to be conducted during our organizational meeting, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn the 2020 organizational meeting.
I move.
Second. Okay. We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. That motion passes, and we will move now to our regular work session. So welcome, everyone, to the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners, December 7th, 2020 Work Session. And I would like to call the meeting to order. You all have a copy of the work session agenda in front of you. And so, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
They're moved.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Honeycutt, a second by Commissioner Shu to approve the work session agenda as presented. Are there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move now to discussion items. First up, we're happy to have Kyle Billifer with us for an update on the Franklisk Park Barn rebuild project. Welcome, Kyle.
Thank you. Since the last time I was in front of the Board, we've had several public interactive meetings. We had an in-person, open-air meeting on the 14th at the park, and we had a virtual meeting on November 18th. And we actually had a pre-recorded video on that, although I monitored the two and a half hours of the virtual meeting to make sure everyone could get the video started and make sure they got the correct link to the survey. So thank you for the communications team for putting that survey together. And really, Lauren, if you could possibly show the layouts, the Option A and Option B on the attachment? If you could just scroll down one page? Thank you so much. So really, what we presented to the public, obviously virtually and in-person, was the two different options that we came up. And we had shown these ideas to you all and wanted to get an idea of what the public felt about the two different types of site orientations and obviously, one layout with a silo and one layout without a silo. The other major difference is having a detached restroom for the exterior user. So the barn, before it burnt down, a few years ago, we added, I will call them exterior restrooms. They were connected to the barn, but you accessed them through the exterior of the barn, meaning you didn't need to go into a reservable space to use them, which is for years what was happening at the park. We got a resounding response that the silo needed to be included in any rebuild that we did. In fact, I went through the numbers, and I believe that we had 73 comments out of 99 that actually referenced the word "silo" in them. And that it was, it had to be put in there for the historical preservation of what was there and also the vibe of the park. And that was one of the questions that was posed by several members of the Board is, you know, what is the importance of the silo on this rebuild? And I think in terms of the public that we heard from, it's obvious that out of the 99 that put that in, that the majority of them feel the silo needs to be included. There were some minor comments about the placement of the silo. And if you could scroll down one page, Lauren, I could better explain this. So as you can see on the top image, the silo is in front, and those are all windows that are behind it on the building. And there was some minor comments about the silo blocking that view. And that is something that we'll have to discuss with the design team if, in fact, we do move forward with a silo. But there was a resounding public input that the silo needed to be there, and that Option B was to be the design that we moved forward with. And again, the two main differences on that, other than kind of orientation and some floor layout, would be the silo and the detached restroom, which if you look at the picture in the middle of the screen, on the bottom of your screen, that looks like it's a detached little shelter, that is an actual restroom facility. And Londa Strong, I know, is on this call, and we've had plenty of conversation about this. That's an operational impact so that we don't have folks going into the building to use the restrooms. However, we're not 100% sure that all of the people that watched the video online, and I actually recorded the video and made sure that these comments were in the video. We're not sure that everybody that reviewed these and watched that video really understood that in Option A, which is the option that did not have a detached restroom, you would have been able to access the restrooms from the exterior of the building. We're just not sure that everybody understood that. Sometimes it's easier to stand in front of people and point that out and explain it. But again, with COVID, we've had to switch a lot of this to virtual. So I can't comment on that, but some of the comments we got for the ones that actually wrote in, they did talk about, I have to be able to access restrooms without going into the space. And I'm not sure they understood that they could have gotten that from Option A. So I guess where I'm going with that is, I definitely understand from the public surveys that a silo is wanted by the folks that filled these surveys out. And I understand that they want to have a restroom that they don't have to go inside the building to get to, but I'm not 100% sure that they need to be, it needs to be a detached facility. And I only bring that up to the Board as that is going to be an expense, because obviously, you're going to build another four-sided building. So there's an expense to that. And I know I've thrown a lot at you. All of the other comments that we got are ones that we can review internally. They have to deal with heaters and fans and HVAC and things like that that we were already kind of understanding, but really, the two major things that we were going for so we can move forward on the design of this building, because as you can see, this is just schematic. We have nothing else. Those two major points were that silo and that detached restroom. So I would like to leave it up to the Board to kind of just maybe throw some questions my way about what we've seen and what we think the cost impacts of that might be.
Kyle, this is Blake. I'm not sure I'm following you on, so you don't think the public realized that without the silo, you then have restrooms inside, and with the silo is what kicks it out away from the building? It's, that's an...
Well, we asked them, what do they like? Option A or Option B? And Option B had the silo and the detached restroom. And Option A had the restrooms attached, but if you look at the door swing and you listen to the video, you can access it from the outside. But based on the comments, so you answer a question, which one do I like more? That's how the survey works. Which one do I like more? And then you can leave a comment. Well, 73 of those 99 people left me a comment that said, you have to have a silo in this. So it's hard for me to ascertain if it was, they liked Option B because of the detached restroom or because of the silo. If I'm looking at this from just a sheer quantity, I'm looking at those answers, and I'm saying the reason that Option B is a resounding, I believe it was 60, I'm sorry, 76% that we need to do it as Option B. I kind of take that as that's because of the silo, not so much of how I'm going to get to a restroom. And that's what I'm kind of throwing out there.
Yeah. I think that's probably a safe assumption to make, since that's such a demanding or a strong feature of the site and of the two options. So your interpretation is probably right. But yes, that is going to drive some expense. One other quick, I just have a, so in Option B, I guess is the page that Lauren has up?
Yes, sir.
On the rendering above, the one at the top of the page, so the blue shed to the left is the restroom. Well, what's the blue shed-looking thing to the right?
I believe that's the canopy that we have over the playground already.
Okay. That's an existing, okay. Gotcha.
Yeah. And again, if the Board wants me to pursue, if the goal is exterior restrooms, that's a very misleading term. That doesn't have to be a standalone facility. That can be an exterior restroom, meaning when you, just like it was before it burnt down in March, you walk up to the barn, you don't have to go through June's birthday party to get to the restroom and interrupt her family, which is why we did what we did, you know, when we did it. I can pursue having exterior accessible restrooms and not have to build that other facility. Londa and I have had a lot of discussion about that standalone facility might prove to be very beneficial, dare I say, in five or 10 years as population increases and as we develop other amenities in the park. And I think that that's something that internally, staff really needs to look at, is, does that standalone restroom help us with a future amenity that has nothing to do with the bar? And that could probably work both ways, is one could argue that, no, we want folks to walk to the barn to have to use the restroom so that they see what a beautiful rentable space it is, so that they do use it for their next corporate party or their next, you know, wedding reception or something like that. So I think that's internal discussion. Really, kind of what I took out of it was just the resounding comments on the silo. And the survey notes are attached, and you can all read through those about the silo. But it's, if you took the time to watch the video and do the survey, I think that the public input clearly shows that a silo is desired at that facility. And that was one of the biggest talking points the Board had had with me in the past.
Kyle, this is Mike. Number three on the drawing below, the green space there, can you or Londa elaborate what kind of activities would be there? And I guess even more elaboration, would they be associated with events going on, or could they be independent with events going on in the building?
I don't think that we, I will let Londa speak to this. We have not drilled down into how we want those designed, but I will let her speak to them.
I think that would be a hard reservation to have, for they have that exterior space, unless there was like, somebody had everything at the barn, all the sheds, the upper, lower, everything up there rented, and that space be rented? Because if somebody's in the barn with a reservation, birthday party or whatever, and they don't have the outside green space reserved, and somebody comes up and uses it, I mean, that's what happens now. That's what happens all around the barn. People use all the areas for whatever's going on. They may just be tossing a ball. They may have just walked up and decided to have a picnic and put it down. So I think that would be a hard part to have a reservation area for. I guess we could have an open space sign that you can't use this spot for, you know, during this specific time, but I'm not real sure how that would, how the public would go with that. It could be. It could be an extension of any of the reservations. It also could be somebody who's bringing their church out that wanted to be outside and not be inside and using that space.
So what...
I think it's hard to, I think it's hard to tell at this moment.
What opportunities does that space give outs to have events in the future?
Oh, yeah. Definitely. Gives an area where we could have, like, there's things that we do now, whether it's the Easter egg hunt or a road race or Santa Claus, or, excuse me, I should say, before COVID, those were things that we did. Or any type of event that might be happening, that would provide a space dedicated at the barn to utilize, most definitely.
And Mike, just for clarification, we have those areas in both of the options. And you see some of this in corporate parks where they put out kind of the signs that just stick in the ground that says, this area is reserved for this certain party today or something like that. I'm not 100% sure how easy it would be to manage it in a park like that, but I'm thinking that we could come to an understanding on how we would manage that. It's just an additional option. And some of the comments that we did get in the survey that come in the later pages do talk about providing some more outdoor area, and I think that that was probably a direct result from COVID.
Kyle.
Kyle.
Go ahead, Diane.
Go first.
That's all right. Well, I was just going to ask, and I think this is, this probably should be obvious, but I just want to confirm. I see number four is the regular parking lot right in front of the barn, correct?
Correct.
And then the one that used to be to the left, that didn't change any, that's still going to be there?
When you say...
Like, if you're walking up to the barn, that parking lot on the left side?
Yes. Yes. That is, that is still going to be there.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, my question, Kyle, sort of relates to what Diane said. If you look at the top image there, where the silo is right in front of us, and then you've got the parking lot to your left, and you've got the walkways going up to the silo, is that part that goes to the right of the silo, is that a road extension or what? Is that just additional walkway?
That walkway is actually there right now. It just turns right after the barn and then loops down, so this is extending it. And again, these are schematic renderings, but yes, a walk, we're not, not, you would not enter via vehicle where the entrance kiosk is. That's not what we would want to do. You wouldn't want to mix the pedestrian traffic and the vehicular traffic.
Right. Okay. And the schematic is on the, well, the location of the old barn.
Yes. I'm sorry.
We didn't move it down to where the playground was. This is where the old one was.
No. Correct. You all put it, we didn't, the last meeting we had, we chose not to move forward with that. That is correct.
That's what I was thinking. I would just, you know, sometimes these schematics are a little bit hard to figure out. But the other question I have, and you may not have this, Kyle, but what's the estimated cost of the silo? Because I think it's considerably bigger, since the building's bigger, the silo obviously is bigger. So what are we looking at on cost for the silo?
I can't give you a concrete number, because we haven't begun design drawings yet, but I looked back at what we were awarded from the insurance company on the silo, and I worked with the architects and really looked at it. So we were envisioning that the silo would be the elevator shaft. And if you would look at building something that wasn't a silo elevator shaft, but was still an elevator shaft, and you kind of did the delta between the two, I think the cladding, so that's what I'll call it, I'll call it that metal cladding and the aesthetics of the silo, I think that that is going to push you in $150,000 to $200,000 more in terms of that cladding.
But if you did the elevator on the inside of the building without the silo, you're still looking at $100,000 probably, wouldn't you agree?
The elevator itself will probably be about $150,000. That's correct. And then you'd lose rentable or usable space that is inside the facility. So that, yeah, we, I think we had kind of already always envisioned that even if it wasn't a silo, the elevator would need to be some sort of exterior shaft, if you will. It either looks like a silo or it doesn't look like a silo. And, you know, a lot of what we talked about, Londa and myself, is trying to come up with some sort of faux or fake silo. And I have some concerns on how you would continue to make that look like a silo if you're not using real silo material. So we have a lot of investigation. The insurance company did a lot of research for me and couldn't find a lot of active silo contractors in this area. So they had to reach out to some folks out in the Midwest and in the West to try to get some of that information. And I'm a little bit leery about doing that. You know, if you drive around, especially in the back country, and if you drive around and see dilapidated barns and things like that, you always see the silo dilapidated first. And usually, that's the first thing that goes, and they leave the barn standing. And that leads me to believe that there may be something to that. I don't think there's a lot of people running around building them per se.
Well, I have to admit, I honestly like the idea of being able to use the silo as the elevator shaft. I think it would be, you know, if the public assess... you know, if the public, if that's what the public wants, you know, based on the survey, then I feel like we have a, you know, a big deal of obligation to do that. Because after all, it's the taxpayers, it's paying for it anyway. Even though we're getting money from the insurance company, but this is considerably more than what we got, I think. But I think though, that, uh, using it as an elevator shaft will be about as cost effective as we can get. So I'm okay with that part.
Thank you, sir. Uh, and just, and your first question about that the, the barn is going back on the current site, yes, that is true, but not corner by corner or anything like that, just near it. I just want to make sure that's clear.
Right. Well, it's bigger buildings.
Correct.
So Kyle, um, you've, you said that y'all have had some discussions about the potential opportunities that having that second separate restroom building would offer. Um, Parks and Rec, Londa and her staff have not come back with a, a conclusion on that yet. Is that what I understood?
I will let Londa speak to that. I think Londa and I need to look at the, the CIP for the future years at Franklin's Park, and, and she needs to probably talk to her staff operationally, probably maybe even down to the, the ranger level, and see if, if that's really a benefit. Is it, you know, if they're, if they're going in from the outside, whether it's attached to the barn or not, does it make that much of a difference? Um, one could argue that, you know, it might be a noise issue. If you have less people having to go up to the barn, you know, um, a lot of people that utilize the playgrounds, is that a benefit for the reservable space inside? And, and I don't want to speak to that because I don't work at the park on a daily basis. So Londa, if you want to speak to that, I'm sure that you can.
Well, and when you talk about the noise and things, that is true. That could be a factor. It all depends on what we end up with for the lower level, you know, is that HVAC, is it like it has been? Are there fans? You know, is it gonna be open? I don't think any of that has been finalized. Is, is that a true statement, Kyle?
We would utilize fans in there. I don't think we, I don't think we've flushed out if we can provide HVAC. I don't see it in those overhang shelters. Don't.
Right. I know it, it had been discussed. Um, since we put the bathroom on the outside several years ago, we've had nothing but, uh, compliments that I'm aware of. I've talked with Perry, the park manager there, and he says he has people still to this day, even though it's been a few years. It's like, hey, the last time I was here, I couldn't use the bathroom up there because I was gonna interrupt a, a group. But by using, utilizing the bathroom on the outside has been wonderful. And as far as that open space area, a- again, it just all depends on what group is there, how it's utilized, and who's utilizing it, where, where the benefits would lie. I, there's benefits as well as cons that could go along with that. I know that's not an answer for you, but.
Well, no, I was just curious where you were in the process. And how many, how many detached, uh, standalone restroom, restroom facilities do we currently have at that park?
Restrooms only or two? Standalone. There's restrooms in the concession building at the ball fields, restrooms in the soccer concession building, and restrooms in the office building, all exterior.
Right. And isn't there standalone restrooms down near the tennis courts?
Yes, there's two, two sets down there.
Right. And so this would be the, a similar type situation, uh, where, where there would be some amount of heat involved to avoid freezing pipes and that sort of thing?
Yes, yes. You, you'd have to, it, it wouldn't be a full HVAC system, but yes, it would be very similar to how we built, um, the lower parking lot restroom. And you would have to provide that. And you have a roof, and you have walls, and you have insulation, and you have all the things that would already be realized in the cost of the barn, and now you're extending it more and, and providing those extra building materials. Yes.
The, the only other comment that I was gonna make is, is, is Londa's comment about somebody from the outside not being able to go in to interrupt the party kind of cuts both ways. The people that have rented the space, to me, sort of have, you know, they, they, they've got, I, I like the fact that we've, we've included private toilets for the renters on that rental space. And then, you know, that means they've rented the space, we're obligated to provide them a clean restroom when they get there, and then we clean it when they, they leave. That's part of the, the rental agreement. And when it's all one restroom, I mean, it, it's a lot less control of what type, type of shape it's in when the renter gets there. And then they're having to deal with people coming in, you know, and, and interrupting. So to me, that, that, that's, I, I, I just think that's a, uh, that's a, a piece that is, makes for, on the rental side, it makes for a nicer experience and would be more likely people would have a good day, a good experience, and want to come back and do it again. If that makes sense.
I have one, just one more question. It's about that outdoor activity space. And, you know, as you deliberate on what you're gonna use that for and how you're gonna use it, um, we don't have, do we? I don't think we have a splash pad out at the park, do we?
No, sir. We have one budgeted in for, uh, our future CIPs. I believe it's actually hits in two years, uh, to redo, uh, some of the amenities at the lake and to, uh, put a splash pad, uh, near the tennis courts. We've actually already had some preliminary design done specifically in, in terms of utilities. If you remember when we built the lower lot, um, restroom, uh, recently completed just, I think a year and a half ago, um, we upsized the sewer line down there, uh, and that was the reason that we did that was to handle that.
Okay. Well, that's good that we've got that on, you know, on the schedule because you get a bunch of kids, especially in the summertime, you know, a splash pad sure is a, uh, a pretty good amenity to have. And that's a good place to have it. I know that they've got one little splash pad. It's up in Canaplis, up there by the YMCA Veterans Park, I believe. I can't remember, or the Pavilion, whatever it is up there. And it, it draws a lot of attention in the summertime.
Kyle, is, is there a timeline on this that I don't remember?
As soon as possible. Uh, I'd like to set the design team, uh, you know, I've been holding them back because we've kind of had to do a lot of public interaction, and then we had to kind of back up and punt when COVID came, um, and kind of go with a video approach. And I'd like to release them, uh, in January to start the design. I guess your question is how long it, that design, I would say would take less than a year. Uh, we can fast track it as much as possible, uh, and get going on, on building. Um, quite frankly, right now is a really great time to do the building because of the amount of utility work we're gonna have to do. We're, we're going to tear up a good portion of our, uh, coming in from the Rubens Road side, the back side, to have to bring all these utilities up. It's gonna be pretty substantial.
So you're saying design time would be a year?
I think we can pare it down less than that, yes.
And then completion time to actually get it open to the public?
Uh, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to comment on that until we have a design done, and I know what that design looks like. Um, I would think a construction time of probably, uh, with the utilities, six to eight, maybe? Six to nine months?
Okay. Thank you.
So what, um, what are the things, the, the items that you need, uh, to check off before uh, you can proceed to the design process? Is this, is this board impeding your progress in any way?
No, sir. I, I think I've heard it is that it, it's fair enough to move with the silo based on the interaction we've got from the public. And in terms of the restrooms, try to achieve exterior restrooms, whether they be standalone or actual exterior on the building. And if I've misinterpreted that, please feel free to tell me.
Well, I share that same interpretation.
Uh, I, I, I heard comments that you would have the joint bathroom at the barn, but you would have a freestanding so you wouldn't be interrupting the activity at the barn.
Well, that's what I wanted to clarify. Your option A is one bathroom, even though you can go in from the outside. So.
So you're co-mingling the ones renting the facility and the ones who are just visiting the park?
Okay, so in, in option A, th- the exterior restrooms is actually, i- it's a men's and a women's. So I'm not, I'm not sure that, that-
But you, do you enter from both sides?
No, you only, you, you would enter from the, yes, thank you. Uh, the upper right-hand corner. You would have ones that you'd enter from the outside, and then you'd have another set for the inside reservable folks.
So you can't access-
So it is two separate, two separate units. It's just a set, oh, there's a storage. Boy, that's a, I thought that was a corridor. That's a storage space. Um, so the, the one that you enter from the lobby, that, the renters, that's the rental bathroom? And then the one over by the vending machine, that's the outside bathroom?
Correct.
Okay, so they are separate. Okay, I, I'm, I'm, I'm with you now. Um, I didn't pick that up earlier. So, okay. I, I thi- I think to me, that's an important distinction that I would like to keep. And since we have it in both plans, I think now you're you, you, you're correct. You're gonna move forward and try to push toward design, knowing that the, the board, A, seems to want the silo based on the public and, and that we like the separate bathrooms, but they don't have to necessarily be standalone.
Correct. And I will also say that, uh, as we start to go through the DD design process and also get into the CDs, as we start to go through the cost estimating, if I find anything that, and obviously I will be giving you updates like I do all of our major projects, but if I start to see some alarming numbers, uh, concerning the silo, I, I will probably be back in front of the board.
Great.
Just real quick question for Kyle or for Rodney. If, if the board uh, gives the green light to go ahead and design, um, the difference between the insurance payment and the construction, how much is that? And where have we identified the zoning or the, um, the, the funds to come from?
So I'll let Kyle speak to the insurance part of it, um, but you will have an agenda item coming up that Susan will speak to about our fund balance appropriation. And in that item, there's three point five million dollars, uh, being allocated for the barn. Uh, so that would be in addition to the insurance proceeds.
Correct. And we received, uh, nine hundred thousand and some change from the insurance company, and we have, uh, the remaining funds will come once we open up the building and we itemize what is known as the BULL policy, which is all of the items that we had to add to this barn to make it compliant with today's building code that weren't in there prior. So the elevator, the fire sprinkler system, and the things that are associated with that, we, and this is why we had to work this into our contract with our architect, is those will be items that are specifically bid in a certain way, so that as the pay applications come in from the contractor, I will literally have itemized dollars for every type of, call it, building code improvement, and we will be reimbursed from those with the insurance company. And, um, oddly enough, that's no longer our provider. We, we've switched providers, so I, I have that in writing from them that we will go back to them and receive that money. And that will only be after we re- we receive, um, the certificate, certificate of occupancy. That will not be during the actual construction.
Kyle, you're talking about a pretty significant number there, aren't you?
Depends. Uh, they have been very, very, uh, vague in terms of, uh, when, when I say that we have to add a sprinkler system, I'm telling you, we have to add or a water line that goes for a quarter of a mile. And I tried to get some very specific answers out of them, if, if that water line was going to be included. And they basically said that if it's on the building, yes. If it's what it takes to get the electricity or the water to the building, no. But I do think that it'll be the four hundred, five hundred thousand dollar area, sir.
Right. And you said that the elevator would be included in that as well?
Yes, it will, because it was not originally. Yes. And I will, my architect will find every single thing possible that I can to fall under that policy.
Right. Well, I, I would say that's good news. I didn't realize all that, that coverage was available.
Yes. So, but obviously I can't get that till the building's done and those, those contractors, you know, they want their money prior to the building being built. So that's why, uh, Mr. Harris is going ahead and, and trying to get this, this funding for me now, so I can move forward and then obviously replenish it and repay that with whatever we get.
Exactly. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Bellifer before we move on, commissioners? Thank you, sir. Uh, we will move now to item three point two uh, in our innovation report, and we welcome Debbie Brennan. That brings that to us.
Good afternoon. It's a pleasure to be here to bring you the December Innovation Report. I'm just gonna share my screen, but I don't think I'm getting there. Um, good afternoon again. Uh, welcome to the December twenty twenty Innovation Report. Uh, for the December Employee Digital Book Club, we're having a little fun listening to NPR Holiday Favorites. This is an eclectic collection of stories about Thanksgiving, Hanukkah, Christmas, and Kwanzaa. Uh, some of the stories will make you laugh out loud, and others are heartwarming and thoughtful. All of these stories have a tie to the holidays that we, uh, share and celebrate at the end of the year. And it's been an eventful year, to say the least. Um, in preparing for tonight's report, I took a moment to review the innovative work accomplished this year while referencing the county's five strategic initiatives. Um, it was easy to see the county's investment in technology continues to be aligned with the vision of you, the Board of Commissioners, in spite of the challenges we have, have and continue to face. I'm gonna start today's Innovation Report with a, a quick, uh, year-end review of the Innovation Reports presented this year. In January, we introduced a new GIS public mapping application. Uh, this web application now averages about fifteen hundred, uh, users per weekday and about seven hundred, uh, per day on the weekend. Um, and as a reminder to those of you in the listening audience, if you want to use our GIS application, uh, you can go to cabarescounty.us slash GIS. Um, Adam Cardenow from Esri was our guest speaker in February, and he gave a report on smart communities. Um, as follow-up to the Esri recommendations this year, we have worked to upgrade our mapping and reporting infrastructure and expanded our GIS portal with new applications and dashboards for visualizing data for informed decision-making. In March, we demoed one of these new data-driven decision-making tools, the Real Estate Sales Analysis Web Application that was developed for the reevaluation process and made public to the, uh, to promote transparency. Um, we moved to virtual Board of Commissioner meetings, uh, using Teams in April. Um, and reports were given on how previous technology investments allowed us to quickly implement remote work for our county employees. Uh, in May, we gave a report on, uh, technology and application development put in place for county business operations to protect the health and safety of employees and the public. Um, a lot of these online services, or all of these online services can be found at cabarescounty.us slash online services. Two of the new applications, uh, we designed were for the Veteran Services Department. Um, this was demonstrated in June. And, uh, a new Veterans Electronic Benefit Claim System, um, integrated with the VA, provides quicker turnaround for benefits. And we've had, uh, thirty-one, um, benefits packages, uh, processed through that since we went live in June with an average of about six days for a turnaround. So, um, that development, even though we have, um, our Veteran Services Officers working from home, they've been able to continue to process those packets and, uh, get benefits for our citizen, uh, veterans. Uh, when our libraries closed to the public, um, in July, the Beanstack application for summer, summer reading program was introduced. Um, and you can find that at cabarescounty.beanstack.org. In August, we provided, uh, provided a review of the vendor payment processes and security around that process, including an introduction of a new service from Payment Works for reducing risk. A new online payment service was introduced in, uh, September for taxes, My Cabco. A new online payment service was introduced in September for taxes, MyCabCo by PayIt. And today, we have processed over 4,300 contactless payments for a collection of around $8 million. And 1,700, a little over 1,700 citizens have created accounts on MyCabCo, making it easier for future interactions with the county. And the tax deadline is coming up, January 6th, so if you would like to go online to pay your taxes, if you haven't done so, you can go to mycabco.cabarriscounty.us. The only negative feedback we've received on this is some people did not realize that there is a credit card fee if you use your credit card, which is 1.85%, which is less than our previous payment processor, and there's a $2 transaction fee. But if you want to use an electronic check, there's only a $1.25 fee for electronic checks. So I just wanted to mention that, because we've had a couple of people give us a little feedback that they didn't realize that there was credit card charges for using that service. In October, we celebrated National Cyber Security Awareness Month with a report from our security team. And we introduced a new peer-to-peer recognition program, SuperCabCo, last month in November's report. Since the implementation in September, we've had 603 peer-to-peer recognitions, which is an additional 227 since my report last month. And today, for the December report, I am now going to turn over the presentation to Emery Ortiz, our Cabarris County Library Director. She's going to introduce a new program that the library is starting using Beanstack.
Hello.
Hello.
Good to see you all. I am also going to attempt to share my screen. Okay, so what I want to present to you today is something that we've been working on for quite some time. Can you see the beginning slide there? A Thousand Books Before Kindergarten? Fantastic. So we started on this journey probably about a year ago. Staff brought this idea to me. A Thousand Books Before Kindergarten is a national program that really focuses on early literacy and early childhood education. So we thought that that would be perfect. We know that's a big community goal right now, is to focus on that. So we really wanted to be involved, but we weren't quite sure what platform to roll that out on. So luckily, like Debbie said, we implemented the Beanstack software package in July to do a digital summer reading program. And it has allowed us to expand services to other reading programs, including A Thousand Books Before Kindergarten. So the way we have this program designed, it's, you know, absolutely free to participate. It's open to any child, birth through five years old, basically anyone before they get to kindergarten. And it's really, you know, supposed to emphasize adults and caregivers spending time and reading with their child, hopefully every day, but as much as it takes to get to a thousand books. You can track your progress online through a browser. You can use the Beanstack mobile app on your smartphone. And we've also made it, you know, an analog option as well. So we've got registration packets that you can pick up from any library location, and we hope to have those distributed out in the community as well, so the program will be accessible no matter where you're at in terms of technology or location. You'll also be able to earn prizes along the way, and I'll tell you a little bit more about that in a second. And we're going to have a lot of fun with this. So the impact of reading to an infant or a toddler that won't sit still for 30 seconds, you know, that may seem a little strange, and it may seem like a challenge to a lot of parents. But it's such a critical time when children are in their first few years of life. It's when they have the fastest brain development, and it's when you can really start making big impressions in terms of literacy and, you know, future academic success. Ohio State University did a study that proved that children who were read to every day before kindergarten started kindergarten with 3,000 more words in their vocabulary than students who didn't. So already off to a huge start there. Along with vocabulary, you've got, you know, critical thinking skills, just basic cognitive abilities. And, you know, you're already far in advance of the children who aren't reading. Now, on a local scale, the impact, to me, I think is pretty significant from the research we've done. In the 2015-2016 school year, 45%, so almost half, of children who started kindergarten in Cabarris County did not meet basic literacy benchmarks. And then on a national level, we, only 35% of students are at or above reading level by the time they reach fourth grade. So, you know, we know it's a big need. We know that starting early makes the biggest impact, and this program is hopefully designed to make all of that very easy. In addition to the academic rewards that early literacy can bring, it also is a great way to just bond with a child. It creates healthy relationships, healthy communication, and is a great activity to do that costs you nothing. Now, one of our big emphasized points is a thousand books, which we realize seems like a lot. And especially if you're a working parent, you have multiple kids, you've got a lot of stuff going on, the thought of a thousand books seems pretty insurmountable. So communications and outreach has helped us put together a fantastic kind of media package, so we can really help break this down for parents and caregivers and make this seem like a very achievable goal. And including, we've got a series of videos that will be roped out through CTW, through our social media pages, that kind of break it down into small-sized chunks. So I've got this video to show you. Hopefully it will play.
Emery, there's no audio. If you want to reshare, make sure you click the Share Audio button when you share your screen.
I did not have a Share Audio option when I shared screen. So I can absolutely email that out, and there's a whole list of them on SharePoint, so I can email the link, and then you guys can go through a bunch of them. But this one is basically Adrian from our Concord Library saying that if your child has a favorite book, you can read the same one every single day, if that's what they want to do, and it still counts towards a thousand books. I know my sisters and I made our dad read Fox and Sox a million times when we were kids. So all of that would have gone towards the thousand books. We also have a Toolkit poster that we're going to include in all of the registration folders, and it'll be online as well, that has additional tips to make it a little easier. Like picture books count. You know, you don't have to have a ton of words on the page to make it count towards your thousand books. Just talking about pictures is a huge part of literacy and, you know, connecting that vocabulary with what's happening on the page. So lots of those will be issued along with those folders. And a very unique thing that we are doing that is not commonplace in other library systems doing A Thousand Books Before Kindergarten, is we are integrating Every Child Ready to Read practices in as well. And we hope that's going to make it a little bit more fun, and again, a little more accessible. So instead of just sitting down and reading, Every Child Ready to Read emphasizes that there are five pillars of literacy. And those, as you can see on the screen, are writing, singing, reading, playing, and talking. These are principles that we incorporate into all of our storytimes at the library and all of our early childhood programs. And we really wanted to kind of introduce those to parents as well. If you've got, you know, again, a super active child that doesn't really like to sit still, you know, get up and sing a song or act out the book that you're reading. Those are totally fine. You're not hindering literacy or education by doing that. In fact, you're enhancing it. So in the Beanstack app, we'll have a series of challenges and activities that parents can opt into that meet these five pillars. We also will have a very nice little prize bag. Once you get to 500 books read, that will have something that represents each of these five principles of literacy in the bag. And again, those are designed to help parents kind of further that learning process with their child. So my big program goals for this, we want this to continue for a long time, you know, and kind of be a perpetual program. You can register for any time at the library. We really want that widespread participation. We've already had several meetings and done several presentations with some community partners that are really excited to have the registration information available in their offices, and they're really excited to promote it. We'd really like to see a lot of community partnership. So one of the five early, Every Child Ready to Read principles is playing. And in that prize bag, we are really interested in having some kind of, we're calling it a community ticket. So it would be like a free ride on the carousel at Village Park in Kannapolis, or maybe a free paddleboat rental or something in Franklin Park. Something that rewards the families for achieving that goal, but also gets them added to the community, so we can all, you know, reward them for their hard work. One way that we're already doing that is through Cabarris Partnership for Children, who, they are the hosts of the Dolly Parton Imagination Library in Cabarris County, which we are heavily promoting through this, because if you don't already know, Every Child enrolled in that gets a free book until they are five years old, mailed to them every month. So that's a great way to both start your own library at home and really, again, practice those early literacy principles. And again, celebrating together. You know, this is a community-wide goal. I know it was recognized in the Health Alliance as something that we really need to focus on. So families that do reach a thousand books, we are hoping to have a large annual celebration, recognize them, have a lot of fun. You would all be invited. And just to really kind of celebrate that as a community, so we can perpetuate that future behavior. This is also, you know, towards our strategic plan of being a better educational partner, being that, you know, valued resource outside of the classroom for continuing education and even starting it, as we are discussing now. So that is a very brief overview of our A Thousand Books Before Kindergarten program. And we're hoping to roll this out on a really wide basis in the coming weeks. We have all the materials ready. It's just a matter of kind of distributing and getting those where they need to go. And I would be happy to-
That was my question.
Oh, go ahead, Diane.
I was going to- That was my question. So what is your target or your plan for distribution and getting the word out?
We have a distribution list right now of community partners who have agreed to host that. So we're really looking forward to getting them the folders. That's all we have to do. Several offices around town. I need to talk to Karen about maybe having some in the DHS office. I'm planning on compiling several and sending them to the county manager's office as well. So if you all would like to pick up some of those and just review or share, if you've got grandchildren, you're welcome to do so.
So is it somewhere electronically as well, or do you have to have one of the folders?
You can do both, or you can do one or the other. All the program information will be the same, and everything that's in the folders will eventually be on the website. They're working on that dedicated website page right now. So it'll, again, we want it to be the most accessible that it possibly could be.
Thank you so much, Emery, and that, you know, I think that program checks so many boxes with the other things that we're trying to do. Certainly, you mentioned the connection with the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, which so many people in the county, a lot of people are taking advantage of. We need more people to sign up for that. All you have to do is fill out the card, which are available from a number of locations, and then you just automatically, your child gets a book a month to arrive in the mail to them. And so this certainly helps promote that. Our Early Childhood Development Task Force, this falls right in line with the things that they're trying to accomplish. So thank you very much for all that collaboration, and it meshes so well. So I appreciate you bringing that information to us.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions for Debbie or Emery before we move on? Or Debbie, does that complete your presentation?
That does complete the Innovation Report for today.
Great, great. Thank you very much. So we will move now to discussion items for action at our December 21st meeting. And first up is item 4.1 from Active Living in Parks, Fees and Charges Policy. We're delighted to have Londa Strong and Byron Hagler with us to talk about that.
Good afternoon, and thank you for this opportunity. Just a little reminder that we do our fees and charges policy based on the calendar year instead of the fiscal year, simply because of when programs fall. Summer camps already started, classes already started when July 1 runs around, so that's why we do January 1. And this year, a little bit different. You received or attached where the changes, as well as the policy and the fees and charges. And we have a disclaimer this year referencing the barn, as well as COVID, as we're leaving everything in there, just like we're going to start with everything that we always have. But we do have a disclaimer in there that, you know, may be changed, may be canceled. Barn's not available, but we've left the prices in there for now, instead of taking them out and then putting them back in. So, you know, they may change by the time it gets around a year and a half, two years from now, when we open back up. So I just wanted to preface that. We haven't made changes in the policy per se in quite a while. It seems to have been working for us over the last several years. And then we've just have a few changes this year as far as the fees and charges themselves. And Byron Hagler has worked with our staff, and he is going to go over that for you. And for Commissioner Strang, Byron Hagler is our Assistant Director. So just wanted to get you in on that, and I'll turn it over to Byron.
Thank you.
Good evening. And as Londa mentioned, I'm just going to go over the fees and charges summary, which should be attached in your packet. And Londa already mentioned the very first item on that packet, which has to do with a general statement for COVID-19. There are two bullet statements on this page. The first bullet states due to COVID-19, facility hours of operation and reservations are subject to change. The second is reservations and related requirements are suspended for barn facilities at Franklin Park until reconstruction is complete. And Londa mentioned the reasons behind those statements. The very next item on there, specifically for the senior center holiday closings, so just a closure adjustment this year based on the county's identified holiday schedule. And that change would be the Thursday before and the Sunday and Monday after Christmas, so 12:23 through the 27th. The next item on that agenda is Page 5 for the fees and charges, which concerns fishing permits. And we have received in the past many years and present of requests for a veteran discount to our fishing program. We charge $2 to fish per person that are 13 years of age and older. And we have received numerous requests for some type of discount, and we got together with staff and we proposed a 50% discount on the annual permit fee only for veterans with proof of service required. Our current annual fishing pass is $40 for a single park location or $60 for all three locations, which is Rob Wallace Park, Camp T. and Spencer Park, and Franklin Park. So the request is to an adjustment or provide a discounted rate for veterans with proof of service for that annual permit.
Byron, let me interject one thing right here, is that currently we are not charging based on cash handling procedures, and hopefully that will be taken care of next year.
Page 6 for fees and charges goes into Camp T. and Spencer Park in reference of the pool itself. So there are several items in this, and I'd like to kind of cover it all at one time. And what that really takes us to is how procedures went this previous pool season during COVID. Our capacity levels shrank drastically. So we roughly were operating about a 25% capacity based on restrictions, which opened up an opportunity to provide reservation-only swim sessions. And what that did was it reduced the opportunity for long lines and for people to be waiting to enter the gate if they've lost their spot. And how that happens is we hit capacity nearly every single day that we are open, especially as you get closer to July 4th, there is going to be a long line outside of Camp T and Spencer Pool. So with COVID, with our reduced size, the last thing we wanted was people coming and showing up and not being able to get in the pool. And how do we notify the public? So what we did was created a, through ITS and the department created a reservation system to allow us to make those, those sessions and for the public to go in and know there are slots available or there are not slots available for the timeframe that I would like to go to the pool. In previous years, you would be able to go in and stay all day or leave whenever you wanted to. But the problem that that caused was as soon as you left, if we had a waiting line outside, you lost your spot in line. So this spot is you have your time slot. You can come and go as you please during that time slot. And it allows us to have the turnover and the time for cleaning in between. So we are proposing two swim sessions, one from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM and one from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM. With the same as we, we proposed this past poll season with a per person charge that is the same across the board. And the reason for that is because of the reduced capacity levels, we, we did not do a tiered pricing system because an online reservation is hard to prove the age and then also the interaction that we had there at the gate. And with those limited capacities, we just did a one price per person of $5 for that time slot. This past pool season, we offered a price of $5 per person for a three hour time slot. What we're proposing for next pool season, if we're allowed to have the facility open with guidelines, would be for a four hour time slot. The discount that we are proposing in this is solely for childcare organizations and that they would have to pay in advance because they are providing childcare needs that we would provide a discounted rate of $4 per person for childcare organizations, but those would be made in advance. Any questions on the pool area, the birthday party package is the same way. It's just identifying that there are two reservation time slots now is what we're proposing for the pool and not just a drop in basis for the pool system.
So just real quick Byron, this is Blake. You're just gonna monitor capacity with COVID and governors, Cooper's orders and all the rest and, and modify as you think necessary or if capacity gets to increase. We just, we're just gonna keep it, keep our eyes and ears open and try to increase if we can.
That is correct, Blake. So right now currently we will provide up to the capacity that we're allowed to. Our, our current pool capacity is 150 guests, but obviously we could not do that this past previous, this previous pool session. And that would give us this reservation based system would allow us to modify those capacity levels on the reservation system to based on whatever the regulations are at that time.
Okay, great.
The last part I have is just for the park program fees and charges. We just identified that the, the current programs, classes, events and tournaments fee range from, from free to $50. We needed to expand that to 75. We have expanded some of our archery programs and especially in the future that we see the need to expand our, our cost up to $75 per participant for a session to cover our costs based on our needs. And the last item is a staffing per hour increase from $15 to 15, to $20 per hour for reservations at the senior centers. That is a part-time staff per hour charge. And that is expanded just based on the cost per hour increases from the county's salary study that adjusted the part-time staff pay range. So we expanded that to match that pay range.
Okay, questions for Byron regarding these changes to the fee schedule? I, I think if you go back and look at the complete list of our fees, they are extremely reasonable and very accommodating for our citizens. So hats off to you for, for going through each and every one of those and, and making these adjustments. Does anybody else have any questions about these changes or comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just Byron or Londa, can you just give a one or two minute update on attendance at our parks here? So getting, are we maintaining those high levels or are they dropping a little bit?
The warm weekends, it has just been full. The numbers haven't decreased at all. We've actually had cabin rentals and tent site rentals as well since we were able to open those again. And I'm sure now that we're getting cooler, the numbers will start to drop, but up until now, we have not decreased. The numbers at the Concord Senior Center in the few classes and the fitness center that we have, you know, since we can only have, since it dropped down to 10 indoors, all of our classes, which I believe is only six, have nine people, eight or less in them with the instructor. And then the fitness center can only have five at a time. We have that set up on a reservation system by the hour and it's pretty much full every time period.
Great, thank you.
I can also just make one more statement in there of even with the cooler temperatures today, we were blessed to have the North Carolina Wildlife Resource Commission to stock Franklisk Park with trout. So whether it's snowing, raining, windy, windy, it will be busy for fishing out at Franklisk Park from, for now and the next several months ahead.
Great. Thank you very much. And I think that the citizens of Cabarrus County are very fortunate to have the, the excellent park facilities during this time of COVID when people are looking for more outside activities and opportunities to, to safely engage in recreation. I think our parks have, have done a great job and certainly you, you folks are responsible for making that happen. I will say that one of the things that, that I will miss this December is the Parks and Active Living Christmas Party. And Byron typically, very frequently is dressed as an elf for that event. So I was expecting him maybe to show up that way tonight, but I guess, I guess maybe next time.
I will try to make a appearance for the regular meeting.
Okay, thank you. We will be counting on that Byron. Okay.
I'm glad.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just gonna say I'm glad I've got he said, I'm glad he has that picture up there because for a moment I wasn't sure I was looking at the same Byron as this Byron. So that's, that's the new COVID look, I guess. So good deal.
Right.
Unfortunately, COVID took all of my hair.
Okay, thank you very much. We will move now to item 4.2, which is our appointments to the Metropolitan Planning Organization. And I believe Suzie Morris is with us to talk about that item? Or Kelly Sifford? Or neither?
Suzie's muted.
Sorry, I was muted. Good evening. What you have before you is the annual appointments for the Technical Coordinating Committee and the Technical Advisory Committee. Those are the two committees that function out of the MPO. The TCC is the staff level committee and the TAC is the elected official committee. So each year there are appointments that are typically done in December and then those run for one year. So staff is asking that I be reappointed as the primary member and that Phil Collins be reappointed as the alternate at the staff level. And then Commissioner Kiger has been serving as the alternate member for the TAC. So I think the intent is for him to move into that primary position. And then the board will need to consider who they would like to appoint as the alternate for the TAC. Once you all determine that, this item can be placed on the consent agenda. You don't have to hold a public hearing for that.
Great. Thank, thank you very much, Suzie. Commissioner Poole has been in that position. And as you mentioned, Commissioner Kiger has been serving as the alternate. So he is familiar with operation. The one, the one item that I will mention regarding both the regular and alternate member on, on this MPO is you are required to fill out the state ethics forms, both from real estate ownership and some other things that you have to do. For that reason, I had done the alternate position on that committee for a number of years because I already had to fill out those ethics forms for the Community College Trustees. In conversation with, with a number of commissioners, I do know that Commissioner Strang has mentioned transportation issues and having some interest in those a number of times. So Commissioner Strang, is this, this an appointment that you think you might be interested in regarding transportation?
Yes, very, very much so.
Very, very good. Then we will, we will proceed in that, that direction to name Commissioner Kiger as the regular member, Commissioner Strang as the alternate and put that on our consent agenda along with the two staff positions that you mentioned. We do have two weeks until our regular meeting should we need to make any change in that direction. We, we've got time to do that. So does anybody else have a question or a comment?
And the timeline works because the, the committee doesn't meet again until after the first of the year.
Very good.
In this particular committee typically does not meet in December or in July.
Right. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we move now to item 4.3. And I think you, you all have a copy of that on your agenda about the various appointments and removals to boards and committees. I think this month, Human Services Advisory Board is the only one we have. Does anybody have any questions or comments on that item? Okay, hearing, hearing none, we will move to, to item 4.5, well, no, excuse me, to item 4.4, which are commissioner appointments for 2021. Lauren has attached a chart of all the various committees that commissioners serve on. She has both a, a blank sheet for 2021 and then she's got a list of the 2020 appointments. I have had some discussion with the current board regarding those, those appointments. And of course, we have made some changes through the year. I think particularly Commissioner Kiger had, had moved into that role on the MPO. I think he had also taken the appointment on the Early Childhood Development Task Force as well. So there may be, if there may be one or two of those that he might want to, of his other appointments, if, that he might want to drop off. I haven't discussed that with him specifically. Commissioner Poole was our representative to the WASAC Board. Commissioner Schu has expressed an interest in, in that appointment. I think most of the others, there may be a few other minor changes in some of the liaison positions. So if it is agreeable with the board based on the, the current appointments, if, if you would allow Lauren and myself to work on that over the next two weeks to get the adjustments made on, on a few of those changes and then submit a list of those appointments to all of you for your input. If you have any, any committees that you currently are serving on that you would like to relinquish, if you could let me or her know that then, or if there are some that you would particularly like to serve on that you don't currently have, if you would make us aware of those. And we'll try to put that list together, which I think might be a little more expedient than us trying to go through the 46 of them during, during this meeting. Does, does, does anybody have any, any concerns or questions about that process?
Yeah.
Great. Well, then, then we will, we will proceed to, to put that together. And Lauren and I have had some, some conversation about that previously. So I think it'll be a pretty smooth process. So we will move now to item 4.5, which is designation of voting delegates for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Legislative Goals Conference. The Legislative Goals Conference will be held virtually this year on Thursday and Friday, January 14th and 15th. As, as we do when we meet in person, we appoint a delegate to, to be our voting delegate on that meeting each year. That does not preclude other of our members from participating in that Legislative Goals Conference either. Just to briefly go through the process, the State Association of County Commissioners has a, a number of task force in several different areas. I know that several of us have served on the General Government Task Force for several years. All of the counties in the state, including us, submit a list of legislative goals for, for the entire year and all the different areas, things that we want the association to represent us on when they work with the General Assembly. Those task force take the, the goals that are submitted by all the counties, all 100 counties, and they dilute those down to the top three, three to five goals in each different category that the consensus of counties across the state agree on. And then they bring those back to the Legislative Goals Conference where those are further diluted down to the, the items that our association wants to focus on for the year. So everyone can participate in that, that virtual conference, just like we would if we were in person, but we just need to designate one member who is willing to serve as the voting delegate. I think for the past, I know the last one, we do this only on the long session. So it's every two years. I know I did that once or twice. I think Commissioner Schu was our voting delegate last time. Is that not correct, Lynn?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, so, so of course require, requires a little homework, trying to, to read up on the, on those goals. But is there anyone that, that would be interested in serving in that capacity? Or would somebody like to nominate somebody to do that?
Mr. Chairman, since I've done it a time or two in the past, I'd be glad to do it again if nobody else wants to, but I'd sure enough deter that to any of the other board members. They've never done it before. It's not really a lot to it, but you do have to do your homework though so you know what you're voting on. Otherwise you'll be blind voting.
Right, right. So does that, that, do I hear a motion to appoint? Well, we don't, I don't think that really requires a motion. We just make a decision, put it on our consent agenda. Do we have consensus to move forward with Commissioner Schu being our voting delegate for the Legislative Goals Conference? I see heads nodding yes. So thank you, Commissioner Schu, for, for stepping up and agreeing to do that. So thank you, Commissioner Schu, for, for stepping up and agreeing to do that. So we move now to item four point six, which is our resolution establishing the Board of Commissioners 2021 meeting schedule. I think that there were some, some emails today that I may not have gotten completely caught up on by the end of the day, but I believe there was a request on particularly our budget workshops. One of those is currently set for April 22nd. And I think we had a request to move that back one week to April 15th. Is that correct? The 15th? So I would, I would ask that we make that change in that resolution. Of course, we see.
So that's, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, that's the, the public meet, that's when we get presentations presented to us from the various? Okay. Okay.
That is correct. And, and I tell you, if, if, if we could, if Deputy County Manager Harris, we've made a little change on the way we do that, which hopefully will make it a little bit more accessible to the public. Would you like to talk about that, Rodney, for just a minute?
Yeah. So the, the intent of this is to allow for public input and to get the board information in a more timely manner. And so having that April work session will allow you to hear from the school systems as well as R C C C about their budget requests so that the manager can get your feedback in advance of his recommended budget. And then post-budget, we would have the public hearing at the first meeting in June rather than on the night of budget adoption. That way you can hear the public input before your final budget workshop and make any changes based on that input.
Okay.
Yeah. I think those are, are good changes. I appreciate you bringing them to us. Okay. Does anybody else have any other comments on any of the other dates that we might want to talk about?
Number seven, where it says the NACO Conference. Am I looking at that date wrong? It looks like it's February 20th through the 14th, 2021. Am I, am I missing there?
No, you, you're not missing. That's what it says. I believe it's the 24th. Is that right, Lauren?
That's okay. I just think we get that changed before next time.
That's a lot earlier than usual.
Yeah.
I think that's a typo that needs to be.
Yeah. We'll confirm that.
Okay.
Yeah. That, that is for, for Barbara's information. That is the legislative conference that the National Association of Counties has in Washington, D.C., where we talk about federal issues, much like we talk state issues. Typically, that includes some, some, some pretty impressive speakers at the federal level. We've had Vice President, several, several other different folks there, although I would say it's probably up in the air right now as to whether that will actually occur this February or not with COVID restrictions and so forth. So we've, but we'll have it on our schedule just in case.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, it is the 24th is, should be the regular date. I just confirmed it. So I'll fix that for the regular meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Lauren. Okay. Any other questions or comments about the proposed meeting schedule? Then Lauren will make, will make that, those two changes, one on the, on the budget workshop and the other on the NACO Legislative Conference and then put that on our consent agenda for our regular meeting. Okay. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't notice this before. So we, since we got skipped because of COVID of hosting the N C A C C, we don't get to redo, they're going to go down to Wilmington?
Well, they had, they are, they scheduled those two years out and so they had already scheduled Wilmington. And I believe so, so that'll be Wilmington in 2021. We were supposed to be in 2020. And so now they have moved us forward to 2022. Is that correct, Mr. Downs?
Lauren, is it 2022 or 2023?
I believe it's 2022.
Okay. Perfect.
Okay. Correct.
Yes. Just, just for the benefit of the public, Cabarrus County was scheduled to host the state, Nash, state, North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Annual Meeting here in Cabarrus County this past summer, and that had to be canceled because of COVID. So we, we got two, two more years to work on it. So we're in good shape. Okay. Any other comments on that before we move on? Okay. We will move now to item four point seven, and that is discussion of the lease purchase agreement with the Conservation Fund. And we are happy to have Jonathan Marshall to talk with us about that.
Good evening. This is, this item is before you, we've discussed it before, but I do want to give some background on it. This is the property off of St. Stevens Church Road, 615 acres in the northeast part of the county. It had been identified in our capital improvement program that we were searching for future park space in that area. But then in addition, we, we are always looking for conservation property. You had created a fund in the recommendation of the Soil and Water Conservation Board that set aside money for purchases like this. So we are recommending that, that you enter into this lease purchase agreement with the Conservation Fund, who will actually be buying the property. And then we would, over a four-year period, based on this agreement, be paying them back through payments from that present use value fund as well as grant monies that we would It does, again, part of why we were able to get it at a much better price than what the original asking price was is because the Conservation Fund is able to help us with this purchase and, and do that faster than most people would be able to buy land. And so they are hoping to close by the end of this month. One of your policies on the present use value fund is that we have a committee review those requests for payments from it. That committee is made up of two members of the Agricultural Advisory Board, two members of the Soil and Water Conservation Board, and two members of the Active Living in Parks Commission. So those six individuals met with us virtually last week to discuss this. And it was a very good discussion about the property, about the conservation quality of the property, as well as its potential for park use in the future. They did recommend that you would move forward with this purchase, including that first payment of a million dollars from that present use value fund. One of the opportunities or a couple of the opportunities we have with this property is there's been some land under cultivation and the Conservation Fund and the county would both want that to continue. So we would be looking at, at a farmer to lease that portion of the property that's been cultivated. And so there would be some lease payments coming in for that. In addition, the hardwood forests would remain as they are on the property, but there is some pine forest that had been planted and has a forestry plan and would need to be monitored and ultimately harvested. So there would be also some revenue from that. So the group that met last week wanted me to pass along a recommendation that any revenues received from leasing that agricultural land and any revenues received from harvesting the pine timber on the property go back into the present use value fund, which would help again buy some conservation property. I, I am asking that you suspend your rules and consider this item tonight. Again, your meeting this month is late compared to when it normally falls within the month. It's on December 21st. The Conservation Fund would actually like to close on this property prior to that. So I am asking that you consider that exception and then a motion to approve this lease purchase agreement along with authorization to create the project ordinance and then to do a budget amendment to move money from the present use value fund into that project ordinance.
Jonathan, real quick before the board moves on, can you, for, just for information to the general public and then also with our, our new Commissioner Strang, just explain what is the present value fund?
Sure. So under the taxation, property taxation system in North Carolina, there, there is the option to, most properties are taxed on highest and best use. So there's a value assigned to them and the property tax is assessed based on that. Under the present use value system, it is taxed instead on its current use. So for farmland or timber property or land that has an approved conservation plan, it actually has a lower value upon which it's taxed. But what happens when property leaves that program? So let's say you have a, a 200 acre farm that's been in that program and has been paying property taxes on that lower value. When they leave that program, they are responsible for paying the, the back taxes for the past three years as if it was being taxed at the highest and best use. So a property, a 200 acre farm would sell and they would go back and reassess what that difference in taxes would have been and the, the seller is responsible for paying those. The Soil and Water Board had asked that because that's land leaving agriculture or leaving forestry or leaving conservation, that we take those payments and segregate them in an account, the present use value fund, and then use those to help with agricultural preservation, which we've done, buying conservation property, which we have done, as well as buying land that had been in timber. I think this would be the first one where we've had a parcel that's been in timber that we've been, been asking you to purchase. They are, it is an irregular revenue, so it's a little bit hard to calculate how much that revenue is going to be. So that's the other thing that it's not something we typically build into the budget, but by doing it this way and accumulating those funds, it gives you the opportunity to go out and, and preserve some of those unique characteristics as well as preserve some of that agricultural economy in Cabarrus County.
Thank you.
Okay. Excellent explanation, Jonathan. And, and this is a wonderful resource that we have to, to, to prevent Cabarrus County from becoming overdeveloped in a lot of different areas and preserving some, some of those natural resources. Does anyone else have questions for Jonathan? Or any general questions on, on this particular item? As Jonathan mentioned, our rules of procedure for the Board of Commissioners indicate that we do not typically vote on items during our work session. We do withhold all of those items until our regular meeting. As I try to point out at each of our regular meetings, we discuss all these items at our work session in, to, in, in a public meeting that we televise, which gives our citizens an opportunity to provide any input, ask any questions during, during that time before we vote on it at our regular meeting. On this particular item, this is one that we've discussed at length at a previous meeting. And so Jonathan explained the reason why we would take action on this tonight, which does require that we suspend our rules in order to do that. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules of procedure to take action on this item due to time restraints.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Strang, a second by Commissioner Schu, that we suspend the rules. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. And that motion passes. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the contract for the sale of real estate between the Conservation Fund and Cabarrus County and authorize the county manager to execute the agreement on behalf of Cabarrus County, subject to review or revisions by the county attorney, and to authorize the finance director to complete all necessary budget amendments and project ordinances.
Mr. Chairman, no motion.
Okay. A motion by Commissioner Schu and a second by Commissioner Honeycutt for the motion to, to approve the contract. Is there any discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. And that motion passes unanimously. I would add one other comment on this particular item. We are so privileged for Mr. Jonathan Marshall to be here with us tonight, making this presentation on his landmark birthday. And so that is how he is celebrating, is with us. So happy birthday, Jonathan.
Thank you.
And you can, and I did not say which landmark birthday that was. I'll, I'll leave that to others.
I'm surprised you can't see the 60 in my office.
I was going to say, it starts with a six and ends with a zero.
Well, we can't see it because you've got the historic courthouse in your background. Yeah. But happy birthday. Thank you for sharing your evening with us. Okay. We move now to item four point eight from Emergency Management, Adoption of Ordinants, Amending Chapter 34 of Fire Protection and Protection. And we are happy to have Steve Langer with us to talk about that item.
Good evening, commissioners.
Steve, before you start, just wanted to pass it on. I don't know if we made the public announcement yet, but as you know, Bobby Smith will be celebrating his retirement and career at regular meeting. So he will be leaving and, and Stephen will be taking on the title of the, of the Emergency Management Director for the county.
Great. Fantastic. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. All right. Well, good evening, commissioners. The item we have before you today is a small minor change to our fire protection ordinance, section 34 dash 30, item number two. There's some additional wording that is not needed and created some confusion on the intent of the section. So through discussions with County Attorney Rich Cook, he's recommended that the following words in this section, but is not limited to, be removed to ensure that the section reads as intended. And this is just to clarify that only citizens of the fire district are able to vote in the general election matters of the fire departments. This does require a, a public hearing, so we would ask that you hold a public hearing at the regular meeting and at the conclusion of that public hearing, adopt the recommended changes.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Langer? Okay. Thank you very much. We move now to item four point nine, and this is from EMS, ambulance fee increase. And we are happy to have Jimmy Lentz with us to talk about that item.
Thank you and good evening, commissioners. We've come before you tonight to request an ambulance fee increase. We monitor, well, insurance, our ambulance fees are mainly set and governed by what insurance companies are willing to pay. So we keep a close eye on that to make sure we're being fair to our citizens and also being fair to the insurance companies in which we work with regularly. Our last increase was on July 1st of 2015, so it's been quite some time since we've had any increase. And we were just made aware of within the last 30 days of an increase in the North Carolina Blue Cross Blue Shield fee schedule, which was presented in spreadsheet format for your review prior to this evening's discussion. But what we're wanting to do is just go ahead, since this is some funding that is on the table, it is somewhat unusual to do it mid-year, but we also felt beneficial to go ahead and get it on January 1st of 2021 and take advantage of the six months remaining in the current fiscal year. But the, the changes are on the screen and like I said, it's been five years and we wanted to go ahead and stay abreast of this and money that's on the table that we felt like was warranted for our services.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Lentz? All right. We do have this scheduled to, to go on our consent agenda. Thank you for bringing that to us.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. We move now to item four point 10 from Finance, Accounting Update for our Capital Project Funds. And we are happy to have Susan Fearington with us to talk about that.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Item 4.10 is an accounting update for several of our capital project funds. As major projects are completed, the capital project funds need to be updated. So this agenda item is an update to our LOBS 2016, LOBS 2017, and LOBS 2018. And just for your reference, our LOBS 2016 was used with $73,785,000 and it was used to build Mount Pleasant Middle School, Conaples Middle School, and Royal Oaks Elementary School. And then our LOBS 2017 was $70,000,000.8 million, and it was used to build our Performance Learning Center, West Cabarrus High School, and our downtown parking deck. And last but not least, our 2018 LOBS was $54,000, excuse me, $54,680,000, and it was used to build our Roy Cabarrus Community College Advanced Technology Center, Hickory Ridge Elementary School, Mount Pleasant High School, and J.N. Freeze Middle School HVAC System Replacement, 20th Cabarrus County School Mobile Units, and some RCCC land. So just an update on what those particular items were used for. As we issue the debt, it takes many years, and that's why we put them in capital project funds, to cover all the expenses and get everything up to date and everything paid out. So as we're doing that, we earn interest on the funds and we have contractor sales tax savings and stuff. And so this is just a cleanup of all the budgets so we can move them into a proper place now so we can spend the rest of the money. So after the budget amendment is before you and the project ordinances are updated and posted, there'll be $138,896.99, and we'll put that in the School Capital Projects Fund. That's to help complete the road and utility work at Conaples Middle School. That one seems to be dragging on since 2016. But that is the, they have assured me that's the final piece. So $138,000 is left to spend. That will be put over in our current county school capital projects fund so we can finish that up. And then the other amounts that will be freed up will be $425,483.61, and that will go into our community investment fund to assist with other debt service payments. So that's, basically, it takes all that budget amendment and all the project ordinances to get us to those two numbers. So I'd be happy to answer any questions or sit down with you individually and show you some more numbers, but that's, in a nutshell, that's what it does. Any questions?
Not a question, but Susan, you get the understatement of the year award when you say that Conaples Middle School is, oh, I've now forgotten the exact phrase you said, but dragging slowly or something, that's an understatement. It is.
I feel funny calling it the new, the new Conaples Middle School because it's been open for three years now. I think that knew us, but anyway. I think that's questions on that one? Anything else?
Any questions for Susan?
No, I got mine answered earlier. I was completely happy with your answers, Susan. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. And now Susan will also talk to us about item 4.11, Cabarrus County Reimbursement Resolution for the New EMS Headquarters.
I think I have the next four items. As part of our next February 22 draw program, a reimbursement resolution is being submitted for the new EMS headquarters. Right now, the estimated cost is $16 million. The resolution will allow us to use county funds prior to the February 2022 debt, and then we'll reimburse ourselves when the debt is sold. This, as additional project, new projects are added to the February 22 plan, additional reimbursement resolutions will be submitted for your approval. This is part of our debt process that we do every time just to, if we need to go ahead and spend some money for architectural or planning or any of those preliminary numbers, we can do that because it doesn't always align with our February or our designated date for debt. So this allows us the opportunity to spend that money and then get reimbursed with the debt proceeds. And this resolution, reimbursement resolution was drafted by our bond attorney, each time Steve Cordell was next in Pruitt.
Okay, any questions for Susan on this one?
Susan, yeah, I just do, just for clarification, Susan, and that is, we're going to be needing approximately $16 million for the new EMS headquarters, somewhere thereabouts. But more than likely, we're not going to go out for a LOBS for just $16 million. We'll probably add that to some other capital improvement school or something like that. Is that correct?
That is correct. In fact, the 20, our February of 2020 that we just issued was for the courthouse and for the new middle school, I think we call it Roberta Road Middle School. Those will not finish in the two-year timeframe. So some of those fundings will have to switch to the 22 draw program. And then anything else that we determined during the budget process that needs to go in with that, those projects, like maybe, I think we discussed, you know, the possibility of the Frankless Barn or something like that, just depending on how much money we have for pay-go projects that we could use cash and not have to borrow money for. But the beautiful thing about this new draw program that we just, this is our first one. Before, when I spoke about the LOBS 16, 17, 18, we received all of our proceeds upfront. However, we had to start paying, making payments on those, on all that money upfront. With the draw program, we're just drawing down what we need. And so each month, I'm receiving a bill for the interest on the, on those amounts that I've drawn. So it's not like we're paying interest on $70 million. So, you know, we're just, just what we've drawn down, we're making those debt service pay the interest on those. And then in February of 22, we'll turn around and issue permanent debt for that, so for whatever we spent. So we're not having to borrow extra money that we may have to, you know, not necessarily using that project, but find another project to use it on. So it is, it is working out well with this new draw program. It's a little bit more detailed keeping up with things on our end, but I think it's going to pay off in the end.
And I totally agree with you. And also for Commissioner Strang's benefit, just so that she'll know that we always try to use our own funds, you know, as far as we can before we go out for debt. Whereas for the soft costs, architect design, the purchase of the land and things like that, we try to always pay cash for that upfront. And then when it comes to the actual construction costs, that's where we get into somebody's pocket for that money that we have to pay interest on. Hope that helps.
Yes, thank you, Lynn.
Any other questions for Susan on that item? Okay, then we'll move to item 4.12, Transfer of Funds for 15% Fund Balance Policy and Closure of Capital Reserve Fund. Susan, again.
Okay. So typically, at December meeting, we're coming to you with our CAFRA presentation. And this year, that's, we're not ready for that this year. We're going to do that in January. And we would, at that point in time, we would have our 15% fund balance policy. And so we would actually tell you how much cash that we, like Mr. Schu just spoke about, cash we get to spend on projects before we go out for debt. So we're going ahead and doing the 15% this time. We're far enough into the CAFRA, the auditors have it in their hands now, but the final touches on it, that we feel comfortable with the numbers that are pre-impresented. So I wanted to go through that with you. And I do apologize if I've got to plug in my computer. You're going to lose my face, but hold on one second.
Can you just make sure that Commissioner Strang knows what the CAFRA is?
Yes. It's our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. And it is due, we do our year-end at June 30. And then we have to have everything, our financial statements to the auditors, and then they review them, get the notes back to us, any changes we need to make. And then we have to issue it to the state. Typically, this is due to the state on October 31. But this year, with COVID and things and different CARES funding, they have extended the deadline. And it's not late, okay, it's due by October 31 to the LGC, but it's not late until December. But this year, they're extending it to January. However, we don't really want to have it linger on after the Christmas holidays. We want to get it done. So we are feverishly working through some of the comments from the auditors now and getting those fixed and back to them hopefully by Wednesday. And then we'll get that all cleared up. And then we'll be able to get that onto the LGC, which is Local Government Commission. So, but then you have to wait in line with the Local Government Commission because all 100 counties are submitting their CAFRA's and all the municipalities. So typically, we get it back within two weeks from the LGC. And then we also turn around and we submit our CAFRA once a year for the GFOA National Recognition. So that's due, they did not extend that deadline. It is December 31, so we will go ahead and do that. And then if we need extension, we'll ask for it. But typically, that's a normal, a normal year, everything's turned into LGC and to the GFOA, the deadlines that we set for ourselves.
Thank you.
So I'm back and I apologize for having to plug in. I'm back, I can see everybody now. Okay, so per the FY21 Budget Ordinance, the sum of our General Operating Fund balance in excess of the 15% is available for transfer and appropriation to our Community Investment Fund. And that's a new, that's a new fund this year where we are stripping out our debt service payments and our, some of our capital, one-time capital annual things and put it into another fund. Therefore, it earns money, it keeps its own fund balance. And so that's, this is our first year for that for FY21. So before that, we would transfer the 15% fund balance policy to our Capital Reserve Fund. So I'll speak to that in a few minutes. But for right now, our calculation is included in your agenda packet. And it might look a little daunting there, but I'd like to point out a few items and then see if you have additional questions about the calculation. So Lauren, if you want to go to that page or send the agenda package, it's the one that says Fund Balance calculation in excess of 15%. That's it. It's pretty tiny on our screen. But if you just look at the top of the screen, it shows like ending fund balance at June 30 is $97 million. So it's 97, 624,280. And you get, you get real excited about that number. But there's also many, many things that you have to set aside by state statute, by law, by committed fund balance, restricted fund balance, assigned fund balance to get to the amount that we can set aside for our pay-go projects. So as you go on down that spreadsheet, I did want to point out, there's one thing here that shows debt payments of $7,442,697. Just for a little background, that, that is our funds that we did with the stimulus package back in 2011. And we have to set aside payments once a year. It's 1.3 million. We have to set that aside, but it's not due until February, excuse me, April of '23. So April of '23, we're going to have to come, go into our fund balance and pull that out and make a payment of $7.2 million. So each year, we're required to set back 1.3 and we'll get to that $7 million. And then again, in April of '26, we'll make another $7.2 million. So that is money that we can't spend. It's in our fund balance, but we cannot spend it because we know coming down the road, we're going to have to pull it out and make that payment. So that's just, I want to point that $7 million number out to you. Another number to point out is our unpaid tax incentives of 3.6 million. It's down a couple of lines lower. These are tax incentives. When we do our tax incentives to the companies, we sort of guesstimate, you know, when are they going to meet all the qualifications so they can get their payments? So each year, our tax department, they will budget a certain amount that they think that the company's going to get. Now, if they don't meet those qualifications in that year, we put that money, we set aside in fund balance because we don't want to, we don't have to rebudget it every year because it inflates our budget. So at the end of the year, we had FY20 incentive grants of $3.6 million that we didn't have, we didn't pay. So we need to make sure that's set aside in our fund balance. It's committed, the board's committed it. So we had to set it aside so we can't spend it on something else. So that's what the 3.6 is. Another number I want to point out is the assigned fund balance is $6,652,997. That is a large amount, however. What that is made up of is we have $5 million that we set aside for extraordinary circumstances. For example, maybe that the state might come out and have a new foster care or daycare mandate in the middle of the year. Well, we need to be able to implement that. If we don't budget it, if we don't know about it in July, then we would be up the creek. So $5 million has served us well as a pot of money that we're going to set aside for extraordinary circumstances. And that is, that's part of the $6 million. And then we have tax appeals. We reach out to our tax department. How much do you think is going to, you know, people appeal? We might have to pay them back. And then we have a $200,000 set aside for building inspections because what if we have a downturn in the economy and we have to still pay our people and they have to, you know, it's just worked out the state is wanting us to set aside a pot of money for that. So all that goes into our assigned fund balance. And I may be getting in the weeds, but I just wanted to point a couple of things out since we do have a new board member. Okay, on down the spreadsheet, we have, towards the bottom, it says that we come down to $16,262,000. Okay, so in a perfect world, we could transfer $16,262,000 over to our former Capital Reserve or now our Community Investment Fund. And we can use that for all of our pay-go, which is pay-as-you-go without issuing debt projects. However, down about, almost to the three-quarters of the page, on July 21, we've already, the board's already appropriated $3,362,22. And that was for projects that were identified that we wanted to, that identified you wanted to go ahead and spend of the fund balance. So that's backed out. It's already, it's already gone. We've appropriated fund balance. And with the budget amendment that's included in your, in your agenda packet, we have also requesting that we want to go ahead and transfer $3.5 million for our EMS Headquarters project and another $3.5 million for our Frankless Park Barn project. And then the schools have reached out to us and they need $400,000 for some mobile units. So if approved tonight, those things would, we would have been, the budget amendments included. So that would be transferred over so we could track it in the multi-year fund. And then the remaining piece, at the bottom of the page, $5,826,763, we go to the Community Investment Fund. And that would be used to assist with our pay-go projects that we spoke about and for debt services, that's what the choice is made, is sitting in the fund as available for projects. So that's what the budget, the first budget amendment in your agenda packet does. I'm going to stop there first and see if there's any questions. That was fast going through. The name of the 15% fund balance policy is 15% of our current budget. And that was, that's in the middle of the page where I'm showing you that our budget as of September 14, which is when we were trying to do our financial statements, was $281,945,802. So we took 15% of that number and that goes into the calculation. So that's where it gets us 15%. 15% is made up of what it would take cash flow purposes because we don't start getting our tax money in until October, November. So if you didn't have that cash flow for the first three months, we need that. So you need to hold back that 15%. And that's what we calculated many years ago, that it takes about 15% to meet cash flow purposes. Questions? I know that was fast.
Nope, but you did a great job. Thank you, Susan.
You're welcome. If you want to sit down, I don't, I don't mind. The second, the second part of the agenda item is for, to liquidate our Capital Reserve Fund. I think it's served its purpose well through the years, but we try to streamline some of our projects, our county multi-year, multi-year projects. Just maybe have just a few, as you heard me mention, earlier LOBS 16, 17, 18. Each one of those were separate funds, separate project ordinances and stuff like that. So to help streamline, we'd like to be able to use just the Community Investment Fund, one School Capital Projects Fund and one County Capital Projects Fund to start streamlining those processes. So as the months go by, we're trying to close some of those older projects out. The only thing that we need to deal with in the Capital Reserve is that we did have money set aside each month from our occupancy tax to go for facility and field expansion. If you recall, we used some of that money this past year for some turf, built, we're building some turf fields, and that, that did come in handy to have that money. So we're tracking that. We want to move that to our new County Capital Projects Fund. And once we do that, then we will be able to have $2.4 million in Capital Reserve left over that we need to do something with. So my agenda item and the budget amendment moves that money into the Community Investment Fund. And there again, it goes into an unallocated portion of the Community Investment Fund. And so as you choose projects to be used it for or if you choose to use it for debt service, it's sitting there waiting for that purpose. It doesn't go away. It's, it's going to be in that fund balance of that Community Investment Fund. If you don't use it within one year, it just, it will be in the fund balance. It does not go back to the general fund to be, you know, used for other purposes. It's specifically set aside either for capital projects or for debt service payments in the Community Investment Fund. So it's a good way of tracking it. Any questions on that? Mr. Marshall, I think you're muted.
Thank you. That was, that was a lot of information, but you-
That was, that was a lot of information, but you did an excellent job of making it understandable, I think. And for those who have followed us over the past year, we had a pretty extensive discussion and explanation of the capital investment fund, our community investment fund and the reasons why we were making those adjustments. And I think we're now beginning to see the benefits of it. So any other questions for Susan on that item? Okay, well, then we will move to item 4.13. And this will be Susan and Kyle, update on the courthouse project funding.
Okay, I'll start and then Kyle, you jump in when needed. To align the courthouse funding with the approved budget, an amendment and project ordinance is included for your review. This update will make our budget match all of our known costs for the new courthouse and the renovation of the existing courthouse. We will only draw funds as they are needed. However, a budget in place is needed for all contracts to be approved and signed. So after the budget amendment is approved, the total estimated cost for all phases of the courthouse project is $134,859,000. So again, $134,859,000 is for all phases. That's from when we started planning to all the way through the renovation of the existing courthouse and to upfitting it with technology and furniture and fixtures. Everything that we can possibly know about right now, that would include that amount. So what we're asking tonight is just an update for the third, GMP3, which would be our third phase, which is renovation of the old existing courthouse. And we're, just based on the project estimates, we were a little bit shy. So we needed the $2 million to be able to get us to that, the $16.7 million estimate for the renovation of the existing courthouse. Kyle, you could jump in if you need me.
Yeah, can you just give us a high-level view of, you know, what drove the difference?
The overall cost of the building did not change from the schematic design. As you saw, the price cost increased it for GMP3, which is the renovations of the 1975 courthouse. And the cost for GMP2 went down. So when we originally did schematic design, you understand in schematic design, the construction drawings are not done. And it was hard for Messer to determine where GMP2 or the new building and all of those construction processes would stop and where GMP3 or the renovations of the 1975 courthouse would start. So as those became more refined with the GMP2 drawings being done, that value became less and the GMP3 or the renovations of the 1975 courthouse drove up $2 million.
Okay, so it's basically just a true-up?
I'm not sure that that's the exact correct financial statement under, financial term. The overall project cost from your schematic review that was given to the board has not increased.
Okay. In my world, that's called a true-up.
Hey, keep in mind too, that we do have currently about $4.5 million set aside in contingency. Of course, we will not touch that if we're not needed. But so that, part of that, you know, total package is, does include a nice contingency that we hopefully don't have to use.
And just as a caveat to that, I had, I'd gone to the board a couple of months ago about the Chillicothe Lenin Street project, about connecting the sheriff's department across the street using the multimillion-dollar tunnel that we built years ago to be able to connect all the chilled water between those two buildings. So that when we have a component go down in one building, we can feed cooling to the other one. Specifically, the driver for that was the jail, a 24/7 inmate, you know, inhabited building. I don't have a lot of leeway over there in case something breaks down. This wasn't primarily to take care of the courthouse since it really is an eight-to-five type of building. But I was taking advantage of this by creating a loop. And one of those discussions we had was that I will be coming back to the board for a portion of that contingency to ask for the board's permission for that, that part of the project to add that to the GMP.
Okay, any additional questions for Kyle or Susan? Okay, we'll move to item 4.14, update of investment officers. Susan, again.
This is my last one. So a list of investment officers by position is being submitted for approval. This will be a change from our previous list of investment officers by name. So if approved, the positions of finance director, deputy finance director, and one of accounting supervisors will be authorized to make investments for the county. But of course, they would be referencing the investment policy. That's also included for your reference, along with our institutions that have been vetted and approved for investments. However, the segregation of duties, just to let you know, an investment cannot be made without a second person approving the transaction. So we do have that in place where, you know, not just one person can go out and do whatever they want to. It has to have a second approval through our process. We can't even, we cannot transfer money out of our bank account without two people. So, so we do have that in place. Questions?
Susan, do we need to update the exhibit since BB&amp;T and SunTrust merged? They're both listed separately?
That's a good point, yes. And I can make that note. They still go by, I mean, we still have a separate BB&amp;T statement that we get. And we get a separate SunTrust statement because our lock boxes with BB&amp;T are day-to-day operations. It's with SunTrust, excuse me. It's SunTrust. They have not really switched over their letterhead and their emails and anything to Truist. We can definitely do that. We will be bringing investment listing to you at least once a year. So if, okay, we'll just leave it the way it is now and then we'll update that for next year. If that's okay.
I mean, I'm sure they have a legal start date. I thought it had already passed. I, my customers, I'm getting email from Truist. But so, hey, you know, what you do, I just wanted to bring it up because it says we updated in May 13 and that may have been prior to that date. But I think now their legal name is Truist. But you know, just, just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. And they said they would continue to honor both names for a while too. So, but yeah, we'll definitely make that change.
Okay.
So Susan, how do we go about compiling the, the list of approved banking institutions? And I mean, there are other, other institutions in our community that if they were interested in being a part of that, how might they go about it?
And we have a process where we check their, I think it's called tenure, tenure rating. Let's get that right, said right. And we check their financial statements and stuff. When people reach out to us, we do try and limit it. We do not have a person that's dedicated 100% of their time as an investment officer. So for her to be able to correspond with, you know, let's just say 10 to 12 investment people who reach out to her, it would take, it would take a full-time person. So we just don't have that. So we have a limited amount of people on the list. But you know, truthfully, we haven't had that many people reach out to us. There's not a lot out there to invest in right now. So we feel comfortable with the list we have, but definitely we would not, you know, discount anyone if they wanted to be, come on our list. And we do have, you know, like I said, once a year, we'll reach out. We will update the board with our, with our list of investors. So it is on the, you know, people would see it, the public would see it now. And I guess if they wanted to reach out to us, they could reach out to the finance department and then we could go from there.
Right, thank you. Okay, any other questions for Susan on that item? And of course, you said that was your last item. We've got you down for the next one or not. But maybe you're going to put that one, put that one off on Kyle, which is item 4.15, infrastructure and asset management, Cabarrus County Courthouse expansion, construction manager at risk contract extension.
I was under the impression that Susan wanted to handle this one also.
Well, I can answer the dollar questions on it.
Currently, Cabarrus County has a GMP or Guaranteed Maximum Price Based Contract with Messer Construction for the courthouse expansion, construction manager at risk services. On December 13, 2019, Messer Construction bid out the scope of work for the site-enabling portion of the project. That is referred to as GMP or Guaranteed Maximum Price Number One and is considered an extension to their original contract, which was for pre-construction services only. GMP 1.5 was executed in August of 2020 and included the bid packages for the ramp aggregate piers, the below concrete and the tower crane. And all of those went in front of the board. And GMP 1.5, to refresh everyone's memory, was to take advantage of the market and get a bid package, especially on that tower crane package. Messer has now received an official GMP2 bid, which represents the remainder of the bid packages for the new courthouse build. So anything else I bring you would be something that comes up in contingency or would be the renovations of the 1975 courthouse. So this is the bulk of the new building. I'm looking for a motion to approve GMP2 bid award and authorize the county manager to execute the contract extension between Cabarrus County and Messer Construction, subject to revision by the county attorney. And again, this all takes place as, with their contract as an AIA document that's already been reviewed. And this becomes a change order and it is attached. And that value that is changing is $81,670,317. So again, 81670317. So just under $82 million to be added to their existing contract.
Okay, questions for Kyle on this item?
We did have a list of contractors that were in that supplemental information that was given. And I just did want to let the board know that probably 12 to 13 of those contractors are contractors that we already use throughout the county, whether it be for preventive maintenance services or construction or electric work. So we're familiar with a lot of them. We probably won't be familiar with the crews that are working on them since it would be so large. We also did, Messer was able to achieve a 11.6% minority and a 7.6% of local. And to give you an idea of what that reflects, on GMP1, we were at 17% minority and we were at 44% local. And understand that that, that change in the locals specifically is based on the sheer scale or scope of the job. In terms of the, the sheer size of those bid packages are extremely large, especially the mechanical, the electrical and things like that. But I did want to just update the board on that. We did not set requirements, but very, very pleased, especially with the minority being over 10% on both GMPs.
Well, that, that is, that is good. I was going to suggest that, that we charge Messer for the advertising that's occurring on the new crane. But since they've done such a good job on that, maybe we'll excuse, excuse them on that.
I'm going to look the other way because I'm trying to talk him into letting me go up there and put a happy holidays sign. So I think that we should probably avoid that for right now.
I think that's a very good idea. As a matter of fact, you know, we might get a couple commissioners to volunteer to climb up there and hang it.
I'm just trying to get the approval from my boss to go up there, so.
So, well, I asked for approval for years to go up in the clock tower of the historic courthouse and, and never got it. And ended up having to film an episode of Out and About in order to get up there. But it all worked out. Any questions for Kyle on this item? Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, we moved to item 4.16 and we have Michael Miller with us to talk about the transfer of a radar trailer asset.
Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
Hairsburg has requested surplus trailer, county asset number 8207 from the sheriff's department. This radar trailer has not been used for several years. It's in disrepair and it uses an outdated type of radar technology. The town would like to upgrade the trailer with a modern radar equipment, similar to what they've already done on one of their own trailers that they already own. He, excuse me, the radar trailer would be used by the Hairsburg Division of the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Department for localized law enforcement services within the town. And so the requested action is for a motion to declare asset number 8207 from the sheriff's office fleet as surplus property that authorize to transfer in accordance with county surplus property policy. So I'd be glad to try to answer any questions you guys may have.
Any questions for Michael? Okay, well, we'll move to the next item, which Michael is also going to talk about, additional surplus property.
Okay. This item, the Allen Volunteer Fire Department has requested one surplus vehicle from the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Office Fleet. And county staff have identified asset number 8347. It's a 2014 police interceptor with approximately 146,000 miles as a match for the request. According to request from the fire department, the vehicle will primarily be used for the chiefs to run errands and attend required meetings and trainings throughout the community and for public relations. So again, here, the requested action is for a motion to declare asset number 8347 from the sheriff's office fleet as surplus property and to authorize disposition in accordance with the county's vehicle replacement policy. And I can try to answer any questions that you may have on that as well.
Questions for Mike? If we were not doing this, then we would be disposing of this through govdeals.com or something like that?
Yes, sir. It's actually Insurance Auto Auctions, which is located out in the Rhimer Township. But yes, we'd be selling it at auction.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you, sir. We move now to item 4.18. We are delighted to have Todd Chanley with us to talk about contract for telecommunications.
Thank you, sir. Todd, I come before you to ask you to approve a contract with Windstream Communications, 36-month agreement. The, the good news with this contract is that we will be reducing the county's overall costs for dial tone. So what will be, the highlights of this is that we will be locking in our pricing for standard B1s, which are those dial tones that we use to service our fire alarms and elevators. The reduced cost on long distance and switching from outdated technology, which we currently use, those PRIs, which are copper and analog lines, to a SIP connection, which would deliver our dial tone via IP or internet-based protocols. So again, we would ask you to allow us to negotiate this contract and finalize it with the county attorney and allow the county manager to sign it.
Okay, questions for Todd? That's, a lot of that was certainly over my head.
Well, like I said, the good news is we are saving, we're saving money on our phone bill, I think, is the, is what I should have put that under there.
Yeah, that's what I heard. I heard saving money and I didn't really understand anything else he said.
Yes, and that's, that's a good thing.
Is this a locked-in rate for the next 36 months?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we thank you. We'll move to item 4.19 from the register deeds office, refund of excise tax. And I think Mr. Cook is going to speak to that one.
That's correct. I'm stepping in for Wayne Nixon, the registered deeds on this one. And as most of you know, we get one of these about every other month where the, the excise tax is paid at the time of Adidas file is usually submitted by the attorney that did the closing. And sometimes there's a mistake made, particularly when you get a situation where the property is in two counties, which is what happened here. Turned out that most of this piece of property is in Stanley County and only a small portion of it was in, in Cabarrus. And what they did was they split the excise tax between the two counties when it should have all been paid to Stanley. when it should have all been paid to Stanley. And so that's the mistake that was made. And all the paperwork that's attached to the, this item and the agenda is correct and what was needed to be able to show that, that what was done was incorrect. So there's a request for a refund of the amount that was paid to Cabarrus County.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Cook on this item? All righty, we will move to item 4.20 from Sheriff's Office, body worn camera funding update. And we are happy to have Chief Deputy James Bailey with us to talk about that. Or at least I was planning for, I don't see his picture.
Yeah, he's on, he's on.
Yep, I'm on. So, good evening, commissioners. So first off, as the commissioners, and we can bring Mr. Strang up to date, we, we applied for a grant to supplement our body worn camera program. We received back, I believe in October, notification that we were denied the grant. And looking at some of the responses from the evaluators, they were kind of all over the place. One would tell us that we had plenty of information provided for diversity. The next one would tell us we did not in our population that we serve. In, in, in learning a little bit more about that process, each evaluator makes their own independent assessment of the, of the application. So at one point, the, several of the evaluators came back with differing opinions on the, on the grant. Long story short, it was denied. So we are coming tonight to address additional funding. I believe Mr. Harris will address that in order to finalize the funding for the body worn camera program.
Yeah, so the question before the board is, do you want to still proceed with this body worn program? If you do, we would have to identify local money to support the expense. The total needed would be about an additional $233,000 annually. That's what would have been covered by the grant. We can identify currently budgeted funds for this purpose to get us through to the end of the fiscal year and then budget accordingly in future fiscal years if the board wants to move forward with this. So I think what Chief Bailey needs tonight is not a motion or to suspend the rules, but just some guidance from the board of whether you still support moving forward with this project.
Mr. Chairman, this is Lynn. I hate that we didn't get the grant, you know. I looked at all the discrepancies and derogatories and all of that. And just like the chief said, it seemed to be all over the place. Some said yes and some said no and some liked it and some didn't. But the bottom line is, like he said, we didn't get it. But I would, I would like to see us just go ahead and move forward with the body worn camera program. And I don't remember what the overall cost was. Chief, do you remember what the overall cost was?
I believe over five years, Roddy, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's a little over 2.1 million over five years, I believe, is the cost.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think with the, the way things are these days, our law enforcement, they take such a beating as it is already. And anything that we can help them with transparency, you know, to show what really happened versus he said, I said, and you said and all of that, that it would be best to go ahead and continue on with that. And I would suggest for this first year, it would take it out of the commissioner's contingency if that would work with Ms. Farrington.
Okay, other comments? I'll just make a quick comment. Since we pursued a grant, I think we were doing that at the request of Sheriff Shaw and Chief Deputy, Chief Deputy Bailey. Even though we didn't get the grant, I assume you guys still want to pursue the program. Is that correct?
Absolutely. And again, as Commissioner Shu alluded to, I think now more than ever, I think it's important for us to have as much documentation with our citizen interactions as we possibly can. And this obviously will enhance that ability for us to do that. So yes, we are definitely in support of the program continuing if the commissioners see, see fit to proceed.
Yeah, I am definitely supportive of that if that's something that they want to pursue. It would have been nice to get the grant, but I think we can, we can figure out a way to make that happen and I'm, I'm for that.
Me too.
I agree.
I think that, that based on the discussion that we had previously, this is quite a bit more complex than just body worn camera. This also includes the, the process that automatically activates the camera when, when they get out of the car, when the taser is pulled. I mean, there, there are a lot of other benefits to it that, that really make us very transparent and accountable to citizens, protects our officers. So, so I, I would be in favor of moving forward as well.
Yeah, one thing, again, from Mr. Strang's benefit, one of the things that we previously had, had worked through was, was the implementation of including it in our in-car systems. So anytime somebody activates their blue lights, their body cam automatically comes on. Or if I activate my body cam, the in-car camera will come on as well. So if there's any officers within about 30 yards of another officer and he turns on his body camera, it will also turn on everyone's body camera. So it's really a good system. We definitely believe it's going to increase our transparency and give, you know, not only our officers, but the citizens, you know, holding each other accountable for, for what's happening in the field. So we're definitely again in support of it.
Okay, any other comments on this one? Okay, then we will move to the next item, 4.21, also from the sheriff's office, Motorola radio contract change order. And Chief Deputy Bailey will address that one as well.
Okay, commissioners, this is a change order to our current Motorola contract. The initial contract we entered into, what the county entered into was back in 2014. Two things that this change order is going to do. One is it's going to change our due date from January 1 to August the 1st, which we find is going to be a little bit simpler for us to deal with when you're working through the fiscal year, to have the payment system to where your payment is due when the new fiscal year begins. So the first thing that I'll advise is the change order. And I don't know if Ms. Linker's got it on page six of the change order, but it'll, it'll go through those, those costs and the due dates. But it'll change the due date to August 1st, which will put us more in line with the fiscal year. And then the second part is, again, it holds our contract price the same throughout the six-year period of the contract. There, yeah, that's it. The second thing, if you'll notice, down near the bottom of that schedule for the payments, we get a $50,000 discount if we can execute this prior to December the 18th. We have a very good working relationship with Motorola. I'm not sure if Mr. Downs can, can attest to any of this, but we've had a good working relationship with them for many years. This contract that we have is actually fairly exclusive to most other law enforcement agencies. And they are willing to give us a $50,000 discount if we can enter into it prior to the 18th of this month. So as part of this, and I know it's, it's outside of our, our normal business, but I would ask that if, if the commissioners agree to suspend the rules and approve the change order, the money's already been budgeted for this year. So there's no, there's no change in the budget. But it's just going to change the due date and then hold those costs over the six-year period of the contract.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Honeycutt, a second by Commissioner Keiger to suspend the rules. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, excuse me, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry, I was just going to let the commissioners know as well. This includes the radios for ourselves, EMS and emergency management. So it's not an exclusively sheriff's office change order. I mean, it's not exclusive, the contracts are exclusive to just us. It's emergency management ourselves and EMS.
Great, thank you. Okay, if there's no further discussion, the motion on the floor is to suspend the rules. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, please say no. That motion passes. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the revised contract between Cabarrus County and Motorola and authorize the county manager to execute the contract on behalf of Cabarrus County, subject to review or revisions by the county attorney. Okay, we had a motion by Commissioner Strang, a second by Commissioner Keiger. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you, Deputy Bailey. Okay, we move now to the approval of the regular meeting agenda. And of course, you all have a copy of that before you. Does anyone see any adjustments that need to be made on our regular meeting agenda? That does include the setting of the, I think we've only talked about one public hearing, yes, which is for the emergency management ordinance. And we will have a public hearing on that item. Any other changes? Not, I would entertain a motion to approve the regular meeting agenda as presented. Have a motion by Commissioner Shu, a second by Commissioner Honeycutt. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. That motion passes. Before we, we move into our, to adjournment or go into closed session, I did want to make just a couple comments about our COVID situation in Cabarrus County. Each Monday morning at nine o'clock, we have a teams meeting, a video meeting, much like we're doing now, with each of our municipalities, as well as the Health Alliance, representatives from the school system and representatives from Atrium Hospital System as well. Our meeting this morning had some, some pretty alarming numbers as far as hospitalizations and the direction that we're going. I believe Atrium said they were moving into their sixth, that is number six, contingency plan as to how they allocate additional space. For those exclusive COVID wards, I may have gotten some of that explanation a little bit wrong, but they are feeling a great deal of stress in trying to, to man those wards and have an adequate number of, of personnel on hand to do it. So the, the hospitalization numbers are up. We were, we were very proud back a number of weeks ago when, when our percentage of positive tests got down to about 5%, which was kind of one of the goals we were looking at. I think, if I remember correctly today, they showed that percentage to be at 11%. So, so things are not going the direction that we would like for them to go. We heard from one of our municipalities this morning that discussed the fact that, that they were going to have to revisit their policy of their public facing facilities that had been reopened several months ago. And they are, with the number of employees that they have in quarantine situations or in the employees that have tested positive, they are having a difficult time getting enough folks to staff the positions in, in those, those public facing buildings. So they're, they're discussing a potential policy change there. The folks at Atrium emphasized to us to please, in addition to the things that we have been doing, wearing our masks, washing our hands, waiting six feet apart, that, that we encourage folks that when you're doing, to try to pick those times of day to shop. If you're, if you're doing shopping, not only for your normal groceries and consumption, but also during the holiday season, to try to choose times where stores are less busy and you're less likely to come in close contact with folks. I would encourage everybody, of course, certainly all of us, as well as the folks watching on television, to go to the Cabarrus Health Alliance website. They have a tremendous amount of information there that, that is updated on a daily basis that will tell you how many, how many positive cases we've had in Cabarrus County, how many of those have recovered, how many are still active. It keeps a running total of the number of, of deaths in the county and, and just, just a, a lot of information. We are hovering dangerously and we're not in the red zone, I don't think yet, as determined by the state, but we're very close. One of the items of concern today was the number of COVID cases in long-term care facilities. Our nursing homes and those types of facilities has risen significantly in the last number of weeks. Those are populations of people that tend to be much more vulnerable to having serious complications. So I think anything that we can do to, to make the public aware of, of facts is, is a good thing. So, so that, that hopefully some of the encouraging news that we're hearing, on the other hand, from an immunization standpoint, will improve. So, so thank you for, for listening to those comments. We do have need of a closed session tonight. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation and economic development as authorized by North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3 and 4.
That moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Honeycutt, a second by Commissioner Keiger to go into closed session. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes and we are now in closed session. So everybody will leave this team session and then you should have an invitation link to the closed session meeting and we will rejoin shortly. Thank you all for joining us tonight.